Good afternoon. My name is Vince Knob, President of Speedway Town Council. Today is November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is seven P. M. And I would like to start out with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll go and start with introductions. Grant Kleinhens on my far right.
Good evening.
Town manager. To his left, Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
To my immediate right is Councilman David Lindsay.
Good evening.
Far left, Bob Clutter, town attorney.
How do you do?
Next to Bob is Philip Faust, our town clerk treasurer. Next to Philip is Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
And on my immediate left is Gary Pettigo, Vice President.
Hello.
We'll go ahead and approval of the minutes of October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. These minutes have been distributed to the council. If those no changes are corrected, we will approve them as submitted. Hearing no changes, they're approved. Next is a request for a temporary road closure of Main Street for light the night on December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Tammy Smith.
Good evening.
Good evening.
That time of year again, we've been planning this year's light the night, and we're real excited about it. It's going to be another fun event. As you mentioned, it is scheduled for Wednesday, December sixth. The event time is five-thirty to seven-thirty. Santa will be arriving on a vintage fire truck at five-thirty. So we request if you want to see Santa arrive, you want to be there before five-thirty and line the streets. We are requesting a road closure on Main Street, just like last year, between Thirteenth and Gilman. Thirteenth and Gilman will not be closed. That will still be open. It's just inside of those two streets. So from Gilman, they can still go south on Main Street, and from Thirteenth, they can still go north on Main Street. So the only closed road onto Main Street would be Twelfth Street that would be affected. It's exactly like we had it last year. We do have, we are requesting that the road closure start at three P. M. and go till approximately eight-thirty, once we finish cleaning things up. The setup time will be three to five. We will have things in the street again. That's why we need the street closure at that time. We will have the snowball pit again, snowball throwing pit that was a, seems to be a lot of fun. And we have the trackless train again this year scheduled. And as usual, the junior high and high school choirs will be singing. We've got several groups and businesses that are participating with activities and craft items for the community to engage in. A street department will provide barricades for our snowball pit as well as closing off the roads. And I've already been talking to Officer Dine, who is going to be taking care of the police side of things. We want to thank our sponsors Speedway Lions Club, Delara, and the Spark Coffee. Spark has come on board again this year to offer free hot chocolate to those who buy a ticket for the train. And then then Delara, obviously, they are utilizing their facility as well as they are going to have some of their employees manning that evening at no additional charge to us. So any questions about the event or anything?
Do I have a motion for approval?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the temporary road closure for Main Street for light tonight on December twenty, December sixth, as presented by Tammy Smith.
Second. Yeah, I got a motion in a second. I'll open up any questions for Tammy. One thing I will say is that the lights look really good on Main Street. I mean, it seems like the company added more lights this year.
Yeah, that's a Cheryl thing there. But yes, that, that, it does look good. I noticed they were putting those up last week, and it's, it's already looking nice.
Yeah. Thank you, Cheryl.
It's a great event. The snowball pit is a lot of fun. An old man throws his arm out pretty easily with those little foam saw balls.
I'm going to reach out to the school, but if anybody knows any of the teachers, whoever might be in charge of Key Club or National Honor Society, if those kids need some service hours, I think the snowball pit would be a great opportunity for them to kind of hang around that. And, and man, those snowballs keeping them in the pit for us. Get those young people out there and earn some service hours. So if anybody has any connections, put in a good word for me. I'll be reaching out to them this week.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and call for the approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye for the temporary road closure.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the two thousand and twenty-four town of Speedway designated holiday calendar. Grant?
It's a mouthful, isn't it?
Well, we're covering the whole year.
Yeah, so before you are the recommended holidays to be closed in two thousand and twenty-four. Thirteen of those listed there with the date, day of the week, and the date on the calendar listed on that schedule.
Mr. President, I make a motion. We approve the two thousand and twenty-four designated holiday calendar as presented by our town manager.
One second.
Okay, you got a motion in a second. Open up any questions for Grant?
How many dates do we have in twenty-three?
We have twelve in twenty-three, but thirteen in twenty-four. I should have mentioned that. I forgot. I apologize. So in discussions with department heads, with municipal center being a polling place and next year being a presidential election, we expect that turnout to be significant, and we feel that would impact business here at Town Hall Municipal Center. So we were recommending closure of that on that day. But if there's concerns about that, we can, we can delete that off of, off of the calendar.
Well, I mean, we specifically moved for a Veterans Day for two thousand and twenty-three away from election days because predates any of us, but going back thirty, forty years ago, people were much more involved in the election process, and that included employees of towns and cities and counties and so on. I'm sure that's why Election Day was on there previously. But certainly wouldn't want to take away Veterans Day, or frankly, any of the holidays. They're all good holidays.
Sure.
One option would be, and it should be done, just based on the way the elections, the election board on a county basis have reduced the number of polling sites. The stress on the three sites in Speedway is greater than what I think it is elsewhere.
More traffic, yep.
Whether it's this site or two other sites, but maybe potentially, I mean, this is, this is a nice host site in many ways, but they use the little tiny conference room over there instead of this room.
And we have talked to them about that, but they, they do what they want to do.
But it's our building, so we can tell them where to be or not to be.
No, we locked those, locked the room off.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just my opinion.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Go ahead and call for a vote on the approval of the two thousand and twenty-four town of Speedway designated holiday calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Next up is approval agreement between the town of Speedway and Westler Engineering for a master services agreement. Grant?
So these are, there are three agreements on the agenda. The first is the master services agreement with Westler Engineering. Then the next two are for specifically task order number one, our water department on call. And number two is our wastewater on call. Both of those agreements, the task order one and two are up to twenty thousand dollars for routine questions. Brad or Ronnie might call and ask a question about telemetry or a pump, et cetera. Those task orders cover that. The first master services agreement is up to twenty-five thousand and covers a little more complex, but once again, on an on-call basis. These are two-year agreements, so these cover the year of two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five. So it's twenty-five thousand for the master services in each year, twenty thousand for each of task order one and two in each year. We also have other engineering firms. We are working on getting those agreements as well. We'll have those to you either in December or the first of January. But we recommend approval of these. Westler has been good and responsive on those day-to-day items, so we recommend approval of all three of these agreements.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the agreement between the town Speedway and Westler for the master service of twenty-five thousand for on-call.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a second. But for discussion, is there any discussion on the master services agreement? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of the approval of the agreement between town Speedway and Westler Engineering for a master services agreement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed? Motion carries five-zero.
Mr. President, I move that we approve task order number one with drinking water on call with Westler for twenty thousand.
Second.
Yeah, I got a motion in a second. I went up for discussion. Any discussion on Westler's water on-call services? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of task order for drinking water on-call services with Westler, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed? Motion carries five-zero.
Mr. President, I move that we approve task order number two for water, wastewater on-call service with Westler for twenty thousand.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. I'll open it up for a discussion. Hearing no discussion, I'll go ahead and call for a vote for the task order for number two for the wastewater on-call services with Westler Engineering. For the approval of that, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries five-zero.
I would mention that I failed to recognize Bridget Ingram, who's in the audience tonight. Sorry.
Hi, Bridget.
Bridget. The only other comment I would have about those three agreements is if there's ever a need to go above and beyond that, we'll inform the council and either have an additional task order or something else that you'll, you'll review and consider.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of claims and utility adjustments. Philip?
Thank you. I have claims and requests adjustments both for the period of October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three through November eighth, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-three. The claims total two million four hundred and seven thousand dollars, two million four hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventeen cents, and there are four utility adjustments on two pages.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the claims and adjustments as explained to us by our clerk treasurer.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion in a second. Open it up for any questions concerning of the claims and adjustments. There's no discussion. I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of the claims and adjustments as submitted by our town clerk treasurer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed? Motion carries five-zero.
Mr. President, we've, I think you and I spoke to the town attorney about this. To expedite things through the holidays, the council can approve, the president to approve claims over the holiday. Will it take a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that the council president be granted permission to review claims and approve prior to our next council meeting, if you correct.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Okay, you got a motion in a second. Open any discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed? Motion carries five-zero. Thank you, David. Next up is our communications.
Good evening. Just a couple things. As Vince mentioned, the, the holiday lights and decor are on Main Street. We're still working through a few glitches of things that need fixed or the thing, the company doesn't put up, but they'll be finished shortly. The only other thing I really was going to mention was the holiday food drive. It's being sponsored by the town. It does benefit Saint Chris Parish Food Pantry and Speedway Christian Church Food Pantry. This goes from November eighth until December fifteenth. Folks can drop off non-perishable items here at the municipal center during our regular hours, nine a.m. to four-thirty P. M., Monday through Friday. And that's it.
Great. Any questions or comments for our communications director?
I had one comment really quickly. Cheryl went out, went above and beyond her duty and redecorated the lobby upstairs.
Oh, yeah?
She, she acquired some furniture for no cost and moved it around a little bit. So if you don't like it, we'll.
Yeah, Grant's still out on that. He's not sure he likes it. Maybe a bit much.
It's different.
It's different.
Change, right. But thank you for doing that.
It's my bright orange jacket.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good.
It's November, yeah.
Yeah. That's it. Thank you very much. Police chief, Chuck Hafshers.
Good evening, counsel. First of all, we're moving forward with our application process. The application phase of that process has been closed. We'll be holding our written test for the, for those new applicants on December the second of two thousand and twenty-three. I believe we're holding that at the high school. So, and we are continuing our efforts to replace our vacated code enforcement position. That application phase is also closed. We're reviewing the current applicants. We plan on doing those interviews for the qualified candidates on November twenty-eighth. With that process, depending on the candidate that's chosen and their ability to give two weeks' notice to their current employer, if they have one, we hope to have that between mid-December, no later than the first of January to fill that position. So, and finally, as many of you are aware, yesterday, our officers responded to an unfortunate shooting incident very early yesterday morning where a young man lost his life. The suspect was located and arrested. Our investigators will be meeting with the Marion County Prosecutor's Office to finalize those criminal charges later this week. So, and that's all I have.
Great. Thank you very much, Amy. Any other questions for chief?
No, just a comment. I know the incident yesterday is like the worst kind of, yes, things that you can, you can come up on and besides being shot at yourselves and dealing with that as well. But I know you're, you're very careful about the information you put out there to protect the quality of the investigation. So just want to make sure I mention that. I know the council knows that, but the public sometimes doesn't understand why all the information doesn't come out right away.
And the, the investigation is still ongoing, even though an arrest has been made. And our thoughts and prayers go out to the family of the young man who lost his life. So we try to keep the public informed the best we can, and our officers all worked a very long day yesterday.
Yeah.
So the investigators were here well into late last night, so, from early on Sunday. So, and they're still working, so.
Thank you, chief.
Okay.
I appreciate the job. Thank you. Bob Fishburne, Fire Chief.
Evening, counsel. We are, we only have twenty-five percent of our promotional process left. We're progressing through that. I want to thank Brian and Bill for their help in videotaping our oral interviews. They'll also be videotaping our scenarios for our battalion and our lieutenant's process. A lot of other places have to pay for things like that, so it saves us money when we can do stuff like that in-house. It's very helpful and very much appreciated. They, they train a chief who's not very technology savvy to run the camera and to do all of that, and I, I really appreciate that. Our run totals for the month of October were two eighty-two, sixty-one percent of that EMS and thirty-nine percent of that fire or P.I.-related, false alarms, those sorts of things. Also, our guys were able to help Lindy Advanced Materials, formerly Praxair, do some fire extinguisher training with our prop and that sort of thing, which is something we try to do with any corporate partners that, that contact us. We, we've also done stuff with the schools before. It's a really nice prop that teaches people how to utilize a fire extinguisher with a sweeping motion that it'll put it out. It's a great prop that actually Lindy Advanced Materials helped us buy years ago. So other than that, I had a good meeting with Grant this morning. Some things, you know, that I can't always talk about here, but I think we had a pretty productive meeting, and if you don't have any questions, that'll be it.
Any questions for chief?
Thank you, chief.
Yeah, thank you.
You guys.
Tammy Smith, Parks and Recreation.
So Tammy apologizes. She had to leave to distribute uniforms for basketball leagues this evening.
Okay.
So she was not able to give her report. She'll give a double report next month.
Next up, Brad Sloan.
Good evening, counsel. We'll start at the wastewater treatment plant. In the month of October, the plant treated ninety-two million gallons of water. Maintenance has pulled out all the U.V. mods. Disinfection season's now over, so we've got them stored and getting them checked out and get them ready for next April. They're also checking the heat traces to make sure they're all working for the winter months and all. At the siphon project, the pipe arrived today. It's been delivered. Locates are done, and they'll be clearing out trees this week. So we're rolling on that.
Fantastic.
Yes. On stormwater side, outfall inspections are being done right now, and Josh Fiddler got his class four I.D.M. certification, so we want to congratulate Josh. He did a good job on that. At the Water Works, Water Works treated sixty-three million gallons of water in October. They got the well winterized for the winter months and hired a second shift operator. Street Department busy picking up leaves and yard waste, patching potholes, mowing rightaways. They completed sewer cleaning at Farley and Twin Oaks, and they're getting their equipment ready for snow removal. That's all I have.
Did Rob happen to tell you the status of the pocket park on, at Thirteenth and, around Fourteenth and Main?
No.
Okay. It's been busted up for a while. I don't know if they're getting ready to pour concrete or they just want to look at it for a while.
Okay.
All right. I'll get ahold of Rob on that. Any other questions for?
Yeah, just, just one, Brad. Can you go over the list of certifications in wastewater? Just give me the current breakdown.
Let's see. We have five class four operators now, which that's the highest you can go as far as municipal treatment. Myself, Greg Homel, Don Mitchell, Joseph Knight, and now Josh Fiddler. So, yeah, we don't, we don't have anything below a class four. So I'm working on getting some others. Some of the others are, they're just eligible for class ones and stuff, so we're working on pushing them along to get that.
Excellent. You've done a great job.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Well, I got a good crew. They're, they're good guys.
Brad, can you remind us the timing on the siphon project? Good weather, bad weather?
They're saying, I talked to Tyler this morning. They're saying three weeks still. So, yeah, hopefully they don't run into any surprises or anything like that. If they do, it might take a little bit longer, but they seem pretty confident that they can get it done three weeks.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is our town managers' report.
Yeah, so, so for Rob Wetnide, I will mention that, and I sent an email to the council today, we did receive a million dollars from the Community Crossings Matching Grant Program. That comes through the gas tax that we all pay as Hoosiers at the pump. And the town of Speedway typically does not get that much money, but we maximized what we could ask for by issuing the G.O. bond last year. So now that we've got that grant award, we will put the bid package together. Probably will be bid by the end of the year, first of January. It has to actually be approved four months from November the ninth or whenever the, the letter was dated. So that, that's good, and then that work will start in the spring. So remember, we're using about a million, about nine hundred thousand from the general obligation bonds towards that project and doing ultimately two-point-three million in roadwork with that, with that grant. So that's a good thing for us.
Grant, I just maybe mentioned to public that those are roads that the town owns.
Yes.
Not.
Not Indianapolis roads, yep. These are typically, and, and I don't have the list of the streets. I probably should have brought that.
North of Twenty-Fifth Street, east of.
Basically, that northeast quadrant of town. It kind of finishes off a lot of those, what I would call surface streets, not the main collectors. The Gateway Project, you may have noticed that the landscaping is ninety-nine point nine percent done. They have installed all the new irrigation that is required and repaired some of the existing that was not working. The sign is still under fabrication, however. It was supposed to be installed by October the thirty-first, so we are exercising the liquidated damages clause of the contract. Unfortunately, it's only a hundred and fifty dollars per day. They have told us that they should have that up and ready and installed by the first of December. So we're pushing on them to get that done, but we also want the project done correctly. I think it's a big improvement out there. I know the Redevelopment Commission is looking at the, they are looking at paying the cost for new irrigation and landscaping in that median in front of the church, kind of just west of Cunningham. It's bare. So they are looking at making that nice, and that will kind of be the last median that really needs to be improved. There's one more remaining, but I don't think it's wise to put anything in that one. But I think it'll be a huge improvement on Crawfordsville Road as people come in for the race and other activities. So it should be a, should be a stark difference in, in what that looks like. Those are the two items that I have.
Fantastic, yeah. Next up is a report from a town councilor members. Gary Pettigo.
Short and sweet this evening. Just a reminder, there's still a shortage of blood donations of all kinds, whole blood, platelets, and red blood cells. So if you're physically able, please donate. And I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. So that's all I have.
Great. Thank you. Next up, Eileen Fisher.
Just to basically state, yeah, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Enjoy your family and your time, well, your time off. So thanks to all the staff and employees of our town here and all the hard work that you guys do. Much appreciated.
Next up, David Lindsay.
She said everything I was going to say.
You can't copy?
No.
Next up, Gary Rakes.
Eileen, yeah, Eileen said half what I was going to say, so I won't, I'll, I'll also say happy Thanksgiving to everyone. But Friday was Veterans Day in the town as it related to Rick Roseborough and Betsy, the, the principal at, at Fisher School.
it related to Rick Roseborough and Betsy, the, the principal at Fisher School. If you remember from our last meeting, Rick Roseborough presented a request. We approved the, the blocking of the streets that surround the junior high in Fisher School. I went to that event on Friday morning. If you've not been to that event, it's wonderful to see, you know, veterans, young and old. There were, there was a 90, I want to say 94, 93-year-old veteran that lives here in Speedway, or has lived in here Speedway, and had another veteran driving him. And we had young, young veterans, as, as young as the early 20s that participated in that. So it was great to see that and see the kids with American flags and, and just recognizing those women and men that served. And there were plenty of both. And it was kind of neat to see that as well. So, that's it.
That's great. Thank you, Gary.
Also, Betsy and Rick said to say thank you to the council for blocking the streets. I wanted to make sure that they said, say that publicly, so I.
No problem. A report from Town Council President. I, I just want to say that thank you to all those who took time out of their busy day on November 7. I think we had a great turnout in Speedway. I mean, it was a busy day all the way around, and I was amazed at, I mean, how, how many people that really are not in the best of health, but they made it out to vote. And it was a great day for that. It was beautiful weather, and, you know, there's a lot of people that wanted to participate in the voting process. So again, my thanks go out to those individuals that made it out to vote for all the races. So I have nothing else. If there's nothing else, we'll come forward to council. I'm going to go ahead and call for adjournment at 7:31.